All right. Hello, everyone. Welcome. My name is Letitia Scott, and I'm proud to moderate today's Ward Seven School Committee candidate debate hosted by the Democratic Ward Committee here in Ward Seven in Somerville. Respectful public discourse and fairness in moderate discussions such as this are vital to the success of our democracy. Underscoring our commitment to diversity, inclusion. So both candidates for Somerville Ward Seven School Committee who qualified for the ballot were invited to participate, and we are pleased to host both of them today. In a moment, we will hear from both candidates in alternating alphabetical order by first names. We are pleased to introduce Ward Seven School Committee candidates Greg Nadell and Sarah Dion. Greg, you can go first.
Hello. Well, hello, everyone, and thank you so much, Justin, Letitia, Jim, Tony, and fellow Ward Seven Democrats for making this event possible. And thank you, Sarah, for stepping up as a candidate with me. Hopefully, this event tonight will help us all come together and learn from and with each other. My name is Greg Nadell, and I live and work at 5 Thorn Dyke Street with my wife Carrie Lurgan. Carrie is a grade seven teacher at Watertown Middle School. I'm a public education consultant. Carrie and I have raised our two boys here, Max, who graduated from high school in 2019, and Charlie, who will graduate from the high school next year. You might not know it, looking around Davis Square and West Somerville, but kids and teens in Somerville have almost 10 times the poverty level of Arlington. However, 30 years ago, there were 10,000 kids in our schools, and now there are only half that. I believe we have the resources to do much more for our young people. I'm not just running to represent Ward Seven to the school committee to address equity, fairness, and joy. I've been doing that for over 20 years. 10 years ago, I started an after-school program called Not Just Lego. Five years ago, I kicked off the plan that will transform the back of the Healy this summer into an incredible new soccer field and park. Four years ago, I served as treasurer of the campaign to build the state-of-the-art new high school. And three years ago, I helped start the Somerville Education Foundation and have raised and distributed over $300,000. If elected to represent Ward Seven to the school committee, I will work hard to transform the status quo and bring innovative thinking and deep compassion for all. I will prioritize universal access to out-of-school time programming. I will streamline formal meetings and reduce overuse of executive sessions to dramatically expand the modes and methods of community input. And I will work to replace outdated MCAS testing, phase-out letter grades, and introduce systems that more completely and fairly measure and communicate evidence of learning. I'd appreciate support from anyone who would like to work with me.
Here's my turn. All right. Hi, my name is Sarah Dion. Thank you so much for having me here. It's great to be here. I know I'm a relatively new member of the Ward Seven Democratic City Committee. Before that, I was a member of the Ward Five Democratic City Committee for several years. So my name is Sarah Dion. I am an elementary English learners teacher right next door in the Medford Public Schools, and I'm also a stepparent and, obviously, Somerville resident. I'm really excited to be here tonight, and I'm excited to share my ideas with you. So as a teacher and as a stepparent, I understand the challenges faced by students, educators, and families because I live them every day. And by working firsthand in the classroom, I understand the impact that school committee decisions can have on the lives of students, educators, and families. And I want to bring an educator's perspective to the Somerville School Committee, which currently contains no teachers. So a few of my priorities: I believe that strong unions make for strong communities. I've worked as a labor organizer for my union, the Massachusetts Teachers Association, both the local and state chapter. And through that work, I have really gotten to know the importance of empowering educators because what's good for educators is ultimately good for students. And I want to bring that educator organizer's voice to the Somerville School Committee. I believe that the MCAS testing system is punitive and harmful. It doesn't measure achievement. It mostly measures privilege. And I believe that racial justice and educational justice are deeply intertwined. And I also believe in mental health support in our schools and investing in enough social workers and counselors to support the mental health needs of all of our students, especially as we emerge from this global pandemic. We have a lot of students carrying lots of trauma. So I'm looking forward to talking more about those ideas. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay, so both candidates will now have two minutes to answer each of the six questions, followed by a one-minute rebuttal. All questions were crafted with neutral wording to avoid bias and will be presented to both candidates. As noted earlier, we will provide cues throughout the chat box at 1 minute, 30 seconds, and 10 seconds. We look forward to a lively, in-depth debate about issues important to Ward Seven Somerville students, their families, and our schools. So let's begin. All right. Our first question is about the school budget. Budgets reflect what a community values. The Somerville School Committee is responsible for developing, approving, and monitoring the Somerville Public School budget. Please share your experience working with the budget and your approach to developing them. What are your top priorities as it pertains to the Somerville Public School budget? We will start with Sarah. You have two minutes.
All right. Thank you. So working directly with a budget is something I don't have a great deal of experience in yet. I have, as a delegate to Mass Teachers Association's annual meeting, we do approve the budget and we can adjust the budget. So I do have that experience there. As far as developing a budget, that would be something new for me. But I think some of my top priorities would be a living wage for our paraprofessionals. They scored a major victory last year with their salary increase, but it is still not even close to a living wage. And as a teacher, I see the hard work they do every day with some of our most vulnerable students, and their salary needs to reflect that. Also, like I mentioned, supporting the social-emotional well-being of our students and making sure that we have enough counselors and social workers in all of our buildings to address the mental health needs of our students. So those are some of my, a couple of my top priorities in terms of budget. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Greg.
Well, thanks, Sarah and Letitia. So as a consultant, I manage budgets associated with education issues on a daily basis. I've been doing that for 30 years. Focusing on the Somerville Public Schools budget, my top priority would be increasing funding for out-of-school time programming. So in a typical school year, 80% of school-age kids' awake time is not in school. Only 20% is the 990 hours that's in school. So kids in poverty tend to catch up during the school day and fall behind nights, weekends, and summers. I would make it a priority to increase support for out-of-school time programming to ensure that there's equitable access to high-quality out-of-school time programming. I would also focus on providing tutoring to students who are not on grade level. Intensive tutoring has proven to be a successful strategy for closing the achievement gap. It's something that I think that every kid who in our schools, who is not achieving a grade level, should have access to intensive tutoring. I would work to further embed technology into our work. And I think we've had the pendulum clearly swung way too far during the pandemic year towards remote learning. But we shouldn't forget that there are still tremendous opportunities to use technology to enable students to create portfolios of their work and more fully express themselves. So those are some of the priorities I would have for the budget.
All right. Thank you. Okay, Sarah, you now have a one minute for a rebuttal.
Great. So I don't feel like there's a ton to specifically rebut there. I think those are also really good priorities. I think that, you know, in an ideal world, we would be able to do everything. And I mean, hopefully, you know, hopefully, in a year and a half, the Fair Share Amendment will pass and we'll have even a little bit more revenue to play with. And so I think that those are great priorities as well. You know, I would love to see, because, you know, after-school programming, like, that's a really, that's a really important thing to have also. But I think, I think I'm a little bit more focused on, I would just be a little bit more focused on the things I said before. But I think that what Greg said are also really good priorities to have.
Thanks, Sarah.
Greg?
Yeah, I guess the thing that I would add is that 85%, I believe, of the budget is in staffing. So staffing is the budget, really, in many ways. And I believe that one of the most important things for us to do is to fix the broken dynamic of collective bargaining. I think it's serving neither side. I think that we should be negotiating contracts that provide steady increases for the next 10 or 20 years. We ought not to create every three years an adversarial process where we pit the educators against the community. I think that's no good for anyone. I think what we saw with the paraprofessionals was destructive to culture and was unfair to the paraprofessionals. Like, we need to move past that type of broken dynamic and create a much more transparent collective bargaining. That's probably the most important thing we can do in the budget.
All right. Thank you. So our next question is about student achievement. Somerville Public Schools have a responsibility to prepare our students to be successful contributing members of our community. How would you characterize the current efforts of our schools in assessing our students and preparing them for success after graduation, including transition to be workforce and continuing their education? What would you do differently? What policies would you advocate to help all of our students succeed after graduation? We'll start with Greg. You have two minutes.
I would say that our schools have gone from fair to good and are not yet excellent. I think that we are not yet preparing our students sufficiently for the world that they're going to engage with. Only about 35% of the graduates from our high school complete post-secondary education. So we need to do much more for kids, to prepare them and to support them beyond age 18 when they graduate from high school. We're still stuck in this industrial model where the floor becomes the ceiling of math and literacy. We need to do much, much more. We had an opportunity to create innovation through the Powderhouse Innovation School. Unfortunately, that project became structurally untenable. But when it failed, what we didn't do is replace it with something equally innovative that was more equitable to all students. I believe that that was a huge loss for the community, and we need to do a much better job of bringing those types of real-world, applied experiences into every kid's life. We have a commitment through the Beyond the Classroom program in the high school to provide internships, apprenticeships, and jobs to all students. We've barely scratched the surface of that. We simply are not preparing our students sufficiently for the world that they're going to engage with. Sarah?
Thank you. Sarah?
Yeah, I think that, I think Greg made some good points, and I think that, well, specifically in terms of assessment, I think our students are way over-assessed right now. I think, especially, like I mentioned in my opening with MCAS, there's just, there's a lot of teaching to the test that is, comes from pressure from the state, which kind of trickles down. And that kind of gets in the way of meaningful learning experiences sometimes. Especially, and this actually, this might be a subsequent question, but this comes from a conversation I had while door-knocking the other day, that a recent graduate of Somerville High was saying that she wanted to see specifically a more robust social studies curriculum, which has really fallen by the wayside largely because of MCAS focus on math and literacy. And she was saying that she felt that the social studies curriculum didn't adequately incorporate diverse voices and voices of color. And so, you know, if students aren't seeing themselves represented in the curriculum, they're not going to be invested in learning. So I think that that's one change that I would, that I would want to help enact is just a curriculum that represents more diverse voices in a more robust manner.
Thank you. Greg, you have a one-minute rebuttal.
Yep. Well, there may be another question about MCAS, but let me just put out there right now that, while I certainly agree with Sarah that there are real problems with MCAS and the way that it reflects the inequities of our society and in many ways amplifies them, I think we need to go far beyond that. I think we need to acknowledge that while MCAS correlates with social, social-emotional status, so do letter grades. So does AP. So do SATs. Right? And while in many ways these measurements expose the inequalities of our community, that doesn't mean that we need, that we can completely throw out all types of assessment and go back to the point where we judge kids more by the way that we think of them than the way that they perform. So I think we need to be moving from the prior systems of letter grades into what's called mastery-based learning, where evidence of skill and mastery is what's measured. And I guess I'm out of time here, so sorry.
That's okay. Sarah?
Yeah, so I just want to make it clear that I'm not against assessment at all. Assessment is obviously a very important tool that educators can utilize to understand where our students' strengths are and where they need to grow. But the overemphasis on the assessment and its ties to, you know, to the, you know, the leveling system that we have with MCAS right now and the threat from the state level is what really, what really gets on my nerves. You know, teachers were very capable of assessing our students without a top-down kind of system from the state. So that's, that's kind of what I was getting at. I think that assessment and, you know, understanding where students are and where they could grow is a valuable educational tool. It's just very overutilized right now.
Thank you, Sarah. Our next question is about school safety. School safety is impacted by a variety of policies pertaining to school culture: discipline, policing, the health supports, and social distancing in our current public health environment, among other areas. What are your top priorities as it pertains to school safety? And what policies would you advocate on the school committee to advance those priorities? We'll start with Sarah. She has two minutes.
All right. Yeah, so I think this is, this is such a complex and nuanced issue, especially right now, just with what the, what the climate is nationwide in terms of policing. And I think that I would definitely continue the moratorium on having police officers in schools. That's, you know, sometimes I feel that, you know, as a white person who hasn't been directly impacted by police violence or police profiling, I, you know, I really try to just listen to voices of people of color who have been impacted in that way. And, you know, what I hear from, from those communities is that, you know, that having policing schools is not what's going to be best for a lot of our kids. In terms of COVID-related safety, I think a big priority is communicating with families in multiple languages, making sure that the communication is going out in their language and in a medium that is accessible to them and making sure everybody understands the importance of getting themselves and their children vaccinated. Obviously, kids under 12, not yet, but when the vaccine for them comes out, that would apply for them as well. But just making sure that everybody understands that vaccination and herd immunity are our best weapons against this virus, especially in schools. So I think that just having that communication is huge. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
I think most people are, have heard of Maslow's hierarchy, and that puts basic needs really at the core. Kids who are hungry, kids who are cold, kids who are unstable in their housing are not going to be prepared to learn. So we need to always start there. I should go back to the budget question and say, that's where I would start. If we have any kid who is not meeting, does not have access to basic needs, that should be the very first thing that we put in both our city and our district budget. In terms of physical security, I agree with Sarah that it's not clear to me that having uniformed armed police officers in the schools is AIDS and safety. But more importantly, it's really about what the young people think. I was very disappointed to see in the school committee meeting that there were no students involved in discussion. To me, to have a discussion around school safety officers and resource officers in the schools and not to have not just one or two students, but a majority of the discussion taking place with students is both a tremendous lost opportunity to provide students with respect and opportunities to have efficacy in their voice. It's also, it's ill-informed from a decision-making process. A big part of what I'm interested in doing is really changing the way that the school committee functions. As I said, decreasing the use of executive sessions, decreasing use of subcommittee meetings, having less formality, more conversation, more collaboration, looking at all different types of participation, youth forums, Discord, all different types, communicating in the, in different language groups, not just through translators. These are the ways that we should attack issues like school safety. And so that's a big part of what I would like to do on the school committee.
Thank you, Sarah. One-minute rebuttal.
Yeah, I agree with that about getting, you know, students and, and, you know, people involved that are representative of all the demographics in the community. I think that, that even, you know, post-COVID, even continuing to stream school committee meetings is a good way to make it more accessible for people that might not have cars, who, you know, might, for whatever reason, not be able to physically get to a school committee but can absolutely, you know, zoom in from their homes. So I think, you know, I think that's absolutely essential because I think a lot of the time, the, the parent voices that get heard are, you know, the more wealthier, like, white families that aren't as impacted by things like policing. And so I think, yeah, that's very important.
Greg?
Yeah, I think formal school committee meetings should be fewer, shorter, and much more effective. I think they should be focused exclusively on rulemaking. I think that they should always be Zoom-streamed, recorded, transcribed, and translated, and that we should have, we should replace the subcommittee meetings with less formal working groups that involve students. I think that when we have a meeting and there's not students present, we should leave an open chair and commit ourselves to doing better next time of having students participate fully in the discussions. Safety for kids is a lot about mental health. And even before the pandemic, that was the number-one thing on our teens' mind. Post-pandemic, it's quadrupled in terms of the impact. So we really need to think about safety of students from themselves in terms of self-harm and from others. That should be the very core thing that we ensure for all kids, with them, with their participation.
Thank you. Our next question is about enrollment. Prior to the pandemic, the school committee in the Somerville Public Schools began an enrollment study considering demographics, programming, and building capacities, and then had to pause that work during the pandemic. What do you consider the most pressing and forming issues in the Somerville Public Schools? What policies would you advocate to address these issues? We'll start with Greg. You have two minutes.
I don't really know why a consultant for enrollment would pause during the pandemic. It would seem like they should be able to do that work in parallel. We have lost nearly half of the school-age population in the city. As I said before, 30 years ago, there were 10,000 kids. Now there are 5,000 kids. We are at risk of becoming an increasingly childless community. And we need to do more to do outreach to preschool-age families to, to help them think about just staying in Somerville. Even just a 10% increase would have a dramatic impact across the school system. So I think what we often are conflating enrollment studies with now is the related question of school-based budgeting based on the mix of students in each school. It will come to that later, but that's something that I think we should be doing, which is decreasing the role for the school district and increasing school-based leadership and opportunities for resource management.
Thank you. Sarah?
Yeah, I think that, well, first of all, I think that the reason why there are so many fewer children in Somerville is largely out of the school committee's control. I think, obviously, the rapid gentrification and increased cost of living. You know, families that want to ultimately buy instead of renting are largely, you know, middle-class families that want to buy are priced out of Somerville. And that's more of an issue for the city council. That's an issue that I've asked several city council candidates about their plans and policies for, because that, I think, is the number-one concern on a lot of people's minds. And I think that's the main reason why we're seeing the student population decreasing is because people are just being priced out. As far as other enrollment issues, I think that in terms of, like, the differences in demographics enrolled in the different schools, I think that kids in all schools should have access to free breakfast and free and reduced lunch. You know, because even in the schools that, that are in more wealthy areas of the city, there are still students from low-income backgrounds who go there. I don't know if this is veering off-topic at this point, but that's, you know, I think that it shouldn't just be the schools that are necessarily in the lower-income areas of the city because we have, you know, kids from low income and high-income families in every part of Somerville.
Thank you. Greg, one-minute rebuttal.
So families are priced out, often by choice, pursuing additional space and perception of higher quality. That's something that we can change. With our new high school and with the school leadership, we can really position Somerville as being a magnet to attract excellence to education. There are high-density places across the country that continue to attract families, and we need to do a better job of doing that. In terms of equity between schools and enrollment between schools, I, I think we, we have a system now that really supports school choice, where parents are free to choose where they send their kids. Something that we should look at, but I think we should not, not, you know, not give up that choice. I think that it is important for people to be able to...
All right. Sarah?
All right. I am, first of all, I'm very on the fence about the school choice model. That's something that I would want to hear further from, from the Somerville Educators Union and from families, both, about their thoughts on it because it's something that, right now, I'm, I am very on the fence about. In terms of, I just, you know, I don't know if it's necessarily fair to say that people get priced out by choice because I feel like the very definition of being priced out means you're not choosing it. But, I mean, it's that, again, that's a totally, it's an issue, housing affordability is an issue totally separate from anything the school committee has control over. But I think that that's, you know, that we need to acknowledge that that's a very real cause of, of families leaving. I know, you know, my partner and I looking at possibly buying, and it's like, it's unattainable here. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next question is about issues specific to Ward Seven. While some issues impact our school citywide, other issues may be specific to Ward Seven. What are your top priorities for students and their families in Ward Seven, including the West Somerville Neighborhood School community? What do you see as key issues facing families with school-aged children in Ward Seven? And what policies do you advocate to address these issues? And what policies do you advocate to address these issues? Um, we'll start with Sarah, you have two minutes.
Alright, sure. Um, I think that, um, I think I've, I've um, okay, so specific to Ward Seven. Well, I think we have um the redevelopment that's going on in the upcoming redevelopment in the Clarendon Hill and North Street Public Housing. Um, I think, and I know this is again, something a lot of city councillors have talked about, is the right to return and just the stability of those families being able to keep their children in the school that they're in um during that transitional period. Um, I think having that stability is crucial for some of these most vulnerable members of our community. Um um, I'm just, I'm just rereading the question. Um, yeah, and again, I think, um, I think mental health of our kids is a big, pretty, again, not very specific towards seven, but I think that's definitely a prevalent issue um with any any school-aged children, um and just making sure that we're supporting that, because I was on the doors, um and I was speaking with, with an older woman, um and I was explaining, you know, about my, you know, wanting to have mental health support in school, and she said, well, why can't that go on outside of school? And I said, you know, with the healthcare system in this country being what it is, that's not accessible, you know, it's prohibitively expensive um for a lot of, for a lot of our students and families, and school needs to really be that safe space. Um, speaking of safe space, I spoke with um, with a transgender teen, um and he was mentioning that he would like to see an LGBTQ safe zone um established at the high school, and he gave a few other good input that, you know, me as a cisgender person never would have thought of. So I think, you know, really listening to community members, I'm is an ongoing thing.
Thank you, Greg.
Uh, definitely uh share Sarah's commitment to ensuring um that uh vulnerable students I mean, uh, North Street, Clarendon Hill and Clarendon Towers um are well-served um through the transition in the North Street Project. Um, and um a high priority would be, for me, would be to work with the city to ensure that the schoolyard project um at the West Somerville gets um the priority attention that it deserves. Um, I was um pretty successful um getting this, a similar project to happen behind the Healy um and um look forward to working um with Ron and the rest of the West Somerville um uh school community to make sure that, uh, that, that, that the West is next. Um, I'd like to see us also work on a teen center. Um, there's a building directly across from the West Somerville Library, which is owned by the city, um which could become a teen center. Um, and we also, I think, should be looking um in Clarendon Hill Project to make sure that we have more uh safe and fun spaces for teens to hang out. In terms of educational programming, um, it's not necessarily a Ward Seven specific issue, but I'm sure it's something that's on everyone's mind, um as we um, a, as we, uh, the recent changes to uh remove um opportunities for acceleration in math is something that I think is going, that um I'm hearing from folks within West Somerville um is important. It's something that, it's another example of where I think we need to do a much better job in the school committee of involving people um in discussions, um particularly kids and through kids, uh family members of um of the first community, um and then making policy. Um, I don't think that this should be something that is dictated um solely by the central administration. Um, I think that that um, that the school committee um needs to complete its transition to being a policymaking board.
Thank you. Sarah, you have a one-minute rebuttal.
Yeah, I think the idea of a teen center is great. Um, I think that's definitely something that that would be beneficial um for youth, and especially if, you know, if it were focused, you know, if there were um just really focused on the diverse group of teens that live here in Somerville and making sure that it's accessible and available um to, to all of our kids. Um, yeah, I don't, I don't think I really have much more to say about that. Um, I think it's been pretty I think I've said all I needed to say there.
Thank you. Greg?
Yeah, just got a, a little bit more about uh differentiation of schools. Um, one thing that um hasn't been talked about enough, but I think needs to get on people's radar is us making a serious exploration of returning a middle school or two middle schools to Somerville. Um, at the time, when my kids were young and they were going through ca- into a K program, I thought that there would be an intimacy um that would be beneficial to them. Um, my experience was that by um their ninth year in school, they really needed, they really needed an expanded peer group. Um, and so um when we think about the West and the East or the Healy and the Kennedy serving as paired middle school programs and then increasing the opportunity for preschool-age access into the West, I think we need to really rethink um the way that we structure our schools, the themes associated with each of the schools, and how we can still allow parents to choose what is the best fit for their kids.
Thank you, Greg. Alright, our final question is about leadership. Um, what is your leadership style and approach to working with constituents? Somerville Public School staff and school committee colleagues? What specific steps will you take to increase participation of Ward Seven residents in education policy? This uh, this decision-making in Somerville? Um, we'll start with Greg, you have two minutes.
Um, central to my campaign is the reason why I'm running for the school committee. Um, I've been very active for the past twenty years and frankly, don't need to run for school committee in order to be active and contribute to the community. Um, the reason why I'm running for the school committee is because I want to work with the school committee to make it a more effective body to support kids. And I can only really do that as a member of the school committee. Um, as I mentioned before, I think the formal meetings should be fewer, shorter, um and focused exclusively on rulemaking. Um, always broadcast, always transcript, translate, transcribed and translated. Um, I think that what we do then is it opens up all sorts of opportunities for diverse participation. Let me give you an example. Um, through the Somerville Education Foundation, we funded a program called Youth Stream out of the Mystic Learning Center. This is a program that set up a Discord server that was run and managed by teens, where they created the rules that ensured us uh that they uh treated each other with respect, and it was authentic youth voice. You really heard from the kids in their voice, in their place. Having them come to an adult meeting where they're expected to follow Robert's Rules of Orders is stifling to the most efficacious of us and an absolute barrier to most others. Um, so that's why I think we need to really say that when we're doing that, which we should, when we're making rulemaking, we should be following Robert's rules. We should follow open meeting laws, we should be very formalized in our rulemaking. But when we're having discussions, when we're doing fact-finding, we need to have a much broader, more st- more diverse approach to participation. Um, so that will be central to what I hope to be able to contribute to the school committee.
Thank you, uh, Sarah.
Yeah, um, so I, if I had to boil down my leadership style, um, actually, um, my uh, my boss that I once worked with at MTA, she said, you know, Sarah, like, you approach everything you do from a place of compassion. Um, and I feel like that's true. I feel like that that's kind of my guiding principle. Um, it, you know, just being compassionate towards the people I'm working with, towards constituents. Um, and obviously, I mean, in terms of Somerville Public School staff, I'm, you know, being a fellow teacher, um I, I, you know, I already understand a lot of, of what their, of what their needs are. Um, in terms of increasing participation of residents, um, I think, like I said before, continuing to livestream meetings, um even once it's safe to do so in person again, I think also making sure that communication goes out in multiple languages and in multiple forms. Um, so for example, I, um you know, I've discovered that contacting families by email isn't always the best way to reach people. And I, so for me, in my work as a teacher, um, for communicating with families, I use an app called Talking Points. It would be, and I know that they have a version of that for like school administrators to communicate with families. I think that should something, be something that's definitely done district-wide, because it automatic, it has automatic translation software built in. The parents can either download the app or just get the message as a text on their phone. It is increased by communication with families exponentially. Um, so I think that's definitely a, a good avenue to pursue.
Thank you, Sarah. Greg, you have a one-minute rebuttal.
Yeah, I like it. I think the Talking Points is exactly the type of um, of tools we should be using. Um, I think that the key is, how do we translate compassion into policy? Right? How do we, and how do we ensure that the policies are really um driven not by anecdote um but by data, that we're really testing? You know, for example, um, coming back to this issue of um, the removing accelerated math opportunities for kids. They, um, it may be that that does not uh prov- provide harm to opportunities for kids to accelerate, but I think we really need to have data that's going to show that. We need to be measuring what we do every step along the way to determine whether the policies that we're putting in place are having the effect that we want them to. Um, so, um, my leadership style is one of listening, of really trying to think hard on both sides of the issue and think through things from a fresh perspective, um inviting participation from everyone, listening hard, and then decisively acting.
Thank you, Greg. Sarah?
Um, yeah, so I think that, I personally feel that um anecdotal evidence is just as valid as data, because not everything can be quantified all of the time. I remember in graduate school, I took a course on what's called qualitative research, which is basically just taking anecdotal observations of classrooms and you know, translating it into research. And I think that, you know, not everything can be quantified. Not everything can be turned into a number. Um, so I personally feel that anecdotal evidence and data um should be used in conjunction, you know, I don't think that one is the end-all and be-all over the other. Um, I think that both, that we should be paying heed to both. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, um, now both candidates will have one minute to deliver their closing statements. We'll start with Sarah.
Um, thank you so much for this opportunity. Um, I really enjoyed answering all of your questions. Um, and I am looking forward to, you know, I've been going door-to-door, um and I'm looking forward to hopefully meeting some of you when I knock on your door. Um, I hope that you all feel that tonight was valuable. I hope that you feel that you got a sense of who I am and what I stand for. Um, and I think that, you know, I think that as an educator, um, I bring that insider's perspective uh to the school committee, so I would be honored to have your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Well, thank you, Sarah, and Letitia, and Justin, and everyone else who made this forum happen. Um, and um, as I said, um, I've been very active for the past twenty years in the community. I've contributed a lot and had a, an impact in a bunch of different ways. And um, really don't need to run for school committee in order to have that kind of impact. But I am running for the school committee for some very specific reasons. I've got some very clear ideas about how we should be prioritizing our resources, how we should be structuring the meetings, and the relationship that the school committee should be having with the schools. I think that we should be doing much more to empower school-based management um and really um having youth voice being central to virtually every decision that we make. If I'm elected to the school committee, that's what you can expect from me, and I hope to have support from you all um and, and look forward to working with you all.
Well, thank you both. So, um, I want to thank um you guys for participating into, in um today's debate and for a lively discussion. Um, your participation is vital to our democracy and our schools. Um, in the coming days, the elected members of the Democratic Work Committee in Ward Seven will vote and announce their endorsement decision for Ward Seven School Committee Representatives next week. Both Sarah Dion and Greg Madoff will appeal on the general election ballot in Ward Seven Committee, I mean, in Ward Seven Somerville. So please remember to vote Tuesday, November second. Um, thanks again to all of you and may God bless Somerville. Have a good night, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Bye, Sarah.
Thank you so much. Bye, Greg.